Good afternoon. I'd like to call the meeting to order of the Palm Springs Public Library Board of Trustees. It is 2:59 according to the clock on the wall, and so I'd like to have a roll call, please.
Okay. Well, first of all, welcome, Dr. Craig Borba.
Yes, welcome, very much.
Okay. Be sure to turn your microphone on when you're talking, but yeah, all right. Well, we know you're here. Harry Cartwright.
Present.
David Kelly.
Present.
Ed McBride.
Present.
And Kathy Warmick is not here yet, and I have not heard, but.
Thank you. I'd like to also add our official welcome to you, Craig, as well.
I appreciate it.
So you have been in the audience long enough, and now you're sitting at the table with us, and we're so glad you're here, so thank you.
Thank you.
And how, what a large support of the library you are, so thank you. Posting of the agenda.
The agenda was posted on or before July 18.
All right. Approval of the minutes.
I move the approval of the minutes.
Oh, I have a question.
Oh, all right.
With regards to the minutes, I think in the last part of the meeting, when we were going through the director's report, I'd asked if the Friends had actually committed to donating $200,000 for the library, for certain books and stuff like that, but I didn't see that in the minutes, because I just figured maybe it was because the number needed to be verified. I don't know.
I don't, I, since it wasn't an actionable item, I, it's, I don't remember why it wasn't put in, or.
I seem to recall it was a discussion about what the Friends had contributed this year to the budget. I think that's where it was.
I would move approval of the minutes with the addition of that.
I mean, that number was correct, right?
Again, I would confirm, but it's at least $200,000.
Yeah.
For.
Yeah, I just want to make sure that's in the minutes.
I agree.
Anything else? All right, so we have a motion to approve the minutes. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Extinction.
Minutes stand approved.
And, yeah. Craig, abstain.
For added starters, guys, we're going to reorder 10 legislative action. We're going to yield the floor to Lisa to announce the building committee, and then we want to move to 10E to do the presentation of the history of the renovation proposals first, so we're going to do that before we do everything else, if that's okay. Are there any other starters that anyone can think of?
Oh, this probably can be done at the end, but I think we need to firm up what our schedule is going to be for November, December, because I think as far as November, we have a conflict with Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Okay.
Sure, we'll discuss that. Thank you. Anything else? All right, time for public comments.
And I, and Don is here from Public Works, so I'm going to ask him to come up, and we'll get you a chair.
Hello, Commissioners, once again. My name is Don Uweno. I'm with the Cities Engineering Division. I just wanted to use this public comment time to give a brief update on the J.C. Frey Building. If you recall, in June, we kind of walked through the area to see, you know, what we want our on-call architects to look at as far as making it usable again, making the bathrooms usable, as far as moving the archive equipment from the main library to the J.C. Frey Building, as well as the needs for the Friends of the library, as far as, you know, just general use, multipurpose use. I do have two architects interested in that, and they're going to submit their proposals to me by August 15. So it's taking a little longer than I anticipated, but it is the process. And then, so, once we receive the proposals, we can review, get an idea of what the costs are going to be, and then I'll come back to this board for further direction.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to add that the architects are architects of record with the city, so they're already on contract with the city.
Very good. Thank you. Treasurer's report.
Okay. So, in the packet, I think there's going to be some corrections that probably still need to be made further.
Definitely.
Yes. So, you know, the last time that we had a meeting with city staff, we were expecting some corrections, and I'll just go through the ones that I think, I think it's probably your last page, the one that starts debits and credits at the top. So it still has this $100,000 notes receivable as a debit, and I thought that that was going to be reduced and adjusted so that it would reflect the $10,000 payment that the foundation has made against that note. So I think that's probably one thing. And then, the other thing, too, I think, going maybe a couple pages back, we had actually had a discussion about, this was the first page on here, about interest income, and it turned out that the, we were kind of concentrating on the budget category line, which, the budget column, to be specific. And you can see at the top of it, it has, besides a 00, the next one down is 8,500. So I think we were making assessments of, and kind of an under-assessment of interest income to us based on that 8,500 figure, and it seems as if, to the right, you can see that they started making some adjustments, so that I think, maybe with another discussion, we could say that safely, that the number for interest income is really being recorded as 10,260, 263. So it seems like she did some of the.
No, nothing's been done.
Nothing's been done.
You can see on the left side, where it's the first item, so the negative $5,849, that's July 1 of 2018. So those are all transactions from last year. Then, so nothing's changed on this form. They haven't, they haven't added the third quarter or the fourth quarter interest income yet to this amount, so the number should go up. And, and the city run in this finance system, it's a, I was explaining this to Craig the other day, we, we have a 12-month fiscal year, and our first month of the fiscal year is July through June, but then they take this imaginary 13th month to reconcile all of the things that happened and close the books. So we're actually going to have another month's worth of information.
Adjustments.
And adjustments, yeah, you're right. So they'll calculate all of the interest income. Hopefully, we'll get all this squared away, and at some point, we're definitely going to get this information reconciled.
And we still have to follow up on the questions that we had from last month, which were, how, you know, whether or not we do have some kind of option to look at putting the endowment in some other options other than co-mingling it.
Right, the other, the investment options and things that the finance director was going to look into.
All good news, though, whether what we get budgeted, right?
And we keep the budgeted amount reasonably low.
Well, yes, yes. Clearly, no, numbers going up are good news.
Love that.
Yeah. No, that's all I've got here.
Do you want to have a number recorded in the minutes of the balance?
Oh, yeah. So typically, we've been saying what the cash balance is, or attempted to say what the cash balance is, and according to this report, it's showing that the cash balance is 1-9-8-8-5-36.09.
And was she any closer to giving you an answer as to whether we had any investment options of our own?
No, no.
So that we could actually earn more money on that.
We're going to have to follow up on that.
Right, and it's, the end of the year, beginning of the year, they're really working on getting, getting the new year opened at this time, so I'm not surprised that we don't have an answer yet on that.
Ed, can we move this up so we don't keep Lisa waiting?
She's next.
Oh, she's next, because we have two more items on.
We reorder the agenda.
Okay.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
Be sure to, is your microphone on when you talk?
No.
Okay.
We're well aware. All right. Friends' report. Is there any Friends' report?
We can, we can hold that to the end if we need to add anything during my report.
Same with the foundation. I'll put it off.
All right, so now we're to 10A, Building Committee update and next steps.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First, I want to thank Dr. Borba for volunteering to join the Library Trustees. We were thrilled to, to see your application and very thrilled to have you join, so thank you.
My pleasure.
So, last evening, Councilmember Holstich and I identified for the full council the membership of the Library Building Committee, so, and I am very pleased with who agreed to take part in that. Dr. Sandra Lyon from Palm Springs Unified agreed to participate. Maria Song, who is a member of the Planning Commission, previously the Architectural Advisory Commission, and Maria was one of the leading architects in the restoration of Fire Station Number Four recently, so really great opportunity to have her participate. Michael Hirschbein, also from the Planning Commission, another architect, so you'll have dueling architects as a part of this, but Michael is passionate about library issues and has been a very important member of the Friends of the Library for quite a long time. Tracy Conrad, who I think most people know in the community, was one of the originals in the Library Foundation, has agreed. And then, from the trustees, Ed and Kathy, and I'm hoping we can, without violating the Brown Act, make sure that there's roles for everybody who's a part of the trustees, but has, we wanted to have the president of the trustees and someone, again, with planning background as part of this. David Brinkman, who is the executive director of Desert AIDS Project, and probably one of the most knowledgeable fundraising people in any community, and since we know that the library is likely, if we are going to build new, require philanthropy, having someone with David's background, as well as his insight into LGBT history issues, that as we start to look, again, we were really pleased. Juanita Garner, she's now getting known more frequently around Palm Springs as Grace Garner's mother, but Juanita has been a, working in the front office at Catherine Finchey Elementary School, going back for a number of years, fluently bilingual, and I'm told there is hardly a Spanish-speaking family that's had a child at Catherine Finchey that has not run into Juanita at one time or another during their child's education, so somebody with a very tactile expertise in, in our community. And then, lastly, Naomi Soto, who I don't know as well, but Councilmember Holstich does, she has been a volunteer and leading person at the Boys and Girls Club in Palm Springs.
She's on Measure J.
Ah, okay.
And she's also working with one of the health initiatives, trying to get medical care to people that are lower income in the valley.
So clearly, there will be a tremendous amount of need and support from the, from staff here, as well as throughout the city. I was really pleased that Dr. Reddy wants to participate directly in, in this effort, so that was, knowing the demands on his time, we're pleased. Councilmember Holstich and I are going to participate as much as we can, but we don't want to be in any kind of leadership role. We want to more be observers and help so as to be able to make sure that when the evaluations come back from the building committee, and what we will be asking is evaluate all of the options that are available to us. There are three that are clearly out there. To expand, refurbish the existing facility, we now will be taking title to Block G in downtown, and so that was set in motion last evening. It's a site that very, very much is a viable option for a library building. It would be a more vertical building than horizontal, but the space is clearly there. There is 1,000 parking spaces underneath that building, or that, that space, and for, I think I've spent close to 1,000 hours looking for parking in the, or at least it feels like that, at the current space, and I confirmed again this afternoon that the College of the Desert is very interested in having conversation with us about the possibility of a joint venture. Now, there may be other options that, that emerge, but those are three very different options, and it may well be that as folks start to review each of the options, there's something that clearly emerges as the best, and that may not happen. So I'm, I don't, we don't want to say pick one. We want evaluate it if an option or two emerge, or you come back and say, you know, they're, the weighting is pretty even between all of them. Ultimately, this is going to be an extremely significant investment on the part of City of Palm Springs, and it's City Council that has to make that final decision as to where we're going to spend money. And this City Council would like to make that decision, and that means that we are asking the Building Committee to have their evaluations ready for us in October. And I think this is the kind of effort you could spend years doing, but it will be the time to come together and, okay, let's, let's sit down and really assess, what do we got here? You're not being asked to design the new building, but make a decision. What are the factors that are good about this option, this option, and this option, and, and then move forward. Definitely, and I do see that you have a late September meeting for this group, so I think it would be very appropriate for you to want the Building Committee to come to you at that September meeting and outline for the trustees what, what the options are and what their analysis is, and preview that before finalizing a presentation for City Council. That, that gives a very important vetting of the process, not only for, for you, but it also creates an additional opportunity for the public to hear the work of the Library Committee and to make an assessment. We are aware that, and I did announce it to everyone at City Council and public, that we know that you are planning to consider hiring a consultant as a part of your agenda today. That decision has the support of City Council.
When do you expect your first meeting?
That's a David Reddy decision, but he, I know he wants to move.
He talked about it this morning with his assistant, and said we need to get this on the books right away.
Right away.
Lisa, you left off Donald Morgan. You've mentioned him.
Oh, I am so sorry, I did. Mr. Morgan is retired military, lives in the Ascena neighborhood, has been. Mr. Morgan is retired military, lives in the Ascena neighborhood, has been in Palm Springs only for a couple of years now, someone that I think is going to be involved in a lot of community activities over the course of the next many years, somebody that I've had the opportunity to meet and very impressed with, and he also volunteered. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Very exciting. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much.
Exciting.
So, we kind of expect this to be staffed by David in terms of his secretary doing the meetings and organizing things?
I think so. I think that's how it's going to run out of the city manager's office.
I'll reach out to him today.
Okay.
What I can do to help. All right, getting back to our agenda, let's just real quickly go through the Friends, and we need to talk about the Foundation. So, can we, did you have a Friends update, or do we not have one?
The Friends are just doing their active, working on their events and.
They're just somewhere in their community for modernism.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
They don't really have a report right now.
The Foundation, even though I don't, we haven't met, so there's not much of a report, however, we do have an issue on the Foundation. Three of us sit on the Foundation Board, and we can't do that. So, we've got to identify a representation from this group for the Foundation Board. Now that Craig has joined us, because Craig is the treasurer.
Treasurer.
And I'm the co-chair, and you're a member, right? So, I, it's.
Well, my term on this board ends in October of next year, and I can't be reappointed.
Is that true?
Yep, come, a year.
No.
Next June.
But 2020, right?
Yep.
So, I mean, we still can't have three of us on the board, the Foundation Board.
But we can be three, but we cannot be at the meeting.
You could temporarily step down from the Foundation and then go back on once you're off this one, I don't know who, or whichever one.
I could step off.
No, you're the treasurer, you've got to stay.
We don't have enough money. No.
Well, I mean, I'll look at, I can even step off too, but I mean, it's really, we're having a meeting on Monday of the Foundation Board, so we've got to decide this now because the three of us can't show up there because we will be in violation.
You can actually have three people, you can just have one sit and be an observer and not active, and then figure it out at the board. That isn't a violation of the Brown Act.
But I think what it is, is that, I don't know, I don't know, oh, I'm sorry. I don't know what your rules are, I can't think of the right word for it, the document that governs you.
The bylaws.
Bylaws, thank you. But if Harry is a voting member, even though he's not an officer, I think that creates a problem from the Brown Act. So, yes, if I walked into the Foundation meeting because I've had no affiliation with the Foundation and was present, I would not violate the Brown Act necessarily, because I'm just sitting there as an observer. But, and it, you know, and, but I think if you have a member who has voting privileges and is, you know, and it was especially an issue for me when I was thinking about the fact, I thought Harry was an officer as well, so to have three officers, that would be clearly.
Have you gotten advice from the city attorney on this? You can always go to them and get advice.
We had advice, when you were an officer, you were the treasurer, they would allow you.
I couldn't be the treasurer.
None of us can be treasurer, that's for sure.
From this board.
Right.
But now he is.
Now I am.
He's.
I think you need advice from the city attorney.
That's probably the best idea.
As to how you handle it.
Right.
And that's what.
The advice was only to conserve from the trustees.
We need advice from the city attorney, not, I don't mean to be rude, but I don't think we need it from you on this issue. I think the city attorney, you should tell the city attorney exactly what the situation is. The Foundation is not affiliated with the city, and so the rules may be different in terms of how that exactly works out. And then follow their advice.
But one thing I would ask him also at the same time is that the Foundation actually has a promissory note with the trustees. So, even having three members of the Foundation who could vote on the impact of that is a potential conflict as well.
I think you need to talk to the attorney.
Yeah. And just figure out what you, what you can do, and also maybe what issues you can't be involved in with the Foundation in terms of the interplay between the two.
And also what positions we hold, that's the conflict too, since I'm the treasurer and you're the vice chairman.
Sure.
Okay. Who's she speaking to?
She's speaking to Catherine.
Oh, sorry. Ed, are you going to be able to do that before Monday's?
I, I mean, it's tomorrow, because the meeting is on Monday, so I will do my.
The city hall is closed on Friday, so you have to do it right after.
The city attorney is an outside attorney, and you can get his phone number from David, and you can place a call. He works someplace else three days a week.
Would you know how to?
He's here today. At the end of the meeting, you could probably request to speak to him.
Okay, thank you.
So, I would say, if for some reason I can't make that contact and get that determination by Monday, when we meet at three o'clock, two o'clock, then I think to be on the safe side, you know, one of us probably should just not be there.
I won't be at that meeting because I have the doctor's.
Okay. So, at least on Monday, there will only be two of us there, so, and we can discuss it at the Foundation Board then as well.
Good so far.
Yeah, yeah, okay. But definitely, if you do stay, you will have to resign as treasurer. So, that's a topic of discussion we'll have to have for the Foundation Board anyway on Monday.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Let's get back to legislative action. So, today, you may recall, we had asked Jeannie to do some of the background research on some of the previous proposals and ideas and concepts for updating the current building. So, she's prepared a presentation for us, and we're going to go through that at this point. So, I'm going to turn it over to Jeannie.
Okay, thank you. I did prepare a presentation. I've got, so I'll tell you what all I have, I have lots of show and tell. I brought you some things to look at. If you want to look at them after the meeting, you're welcome to do that. I went through the archive of our, we have a cabinet of all of these plans, and plans that aren't even of the library. So, maybe Public Works should, or Engineering should take a look at them. So, what I've got is, I want to do a little presentation of the history of what has been proposed and what has been done at the current main library, which opened in 1975. And then I want to switch presentations and quickly go through the one that was done in 2013, some highlights. I'll hit some highlights of it because it's long and you don't need or care about some of that information. But I wanted to show you this. The library was built in 1975. It was part of Measure R for recreation. It was like Measure J, but it was Measure R, and that's when all of Sunrise Park got built, Pavilion Recreation, you know, the buildings on that area. And here is a picture of the library. This is back in the day, we used to have a fountain in the middle instead of a koi pond. It used to not even have railings, and someone fell in, so then they had to put up railings. And then they decided immediately that a fountain in books was not a good idea, so they switched it to a koi pond. But what you can see in the background, this is a postcard, in the background it says circulation, and that is, whichever one's easier for you to look at, I don't care, feel free to twist around. The circulation desk was at the south entrance to the library. Now, this is a picture of that drawing over there with the red marker on it. The library, remember, libraries opened in 75. Two years later, they were already having parking concerns. So, in 1977, there was a proposal to expand the parking lot near that original south entrance. This did not happen. Oh, and that's where the pickleball courts are proposed. In 1984, in August, you know how hot it is right now, a 90-year-old man collapsed, walking 600 feet from the current parking lot to that current, that south entrance. And so, that was it. That was the catalyst. They had had it with having people walk so far to that original entrance that in 1985 they enclosed this patio on the east side and built the east entrance, which is where it is now, today.
So, that, the entrance was originally a patio?
Yes, or lawn, or, yeah, patio, yeah. So, it was, it was outside, and they enclosed it. So, let's see, 70, 75, 77, 84, 85, now 89, they're, 1989, they're already proposing an expansion to this building. It's about 34,000 square feet. So, there was a proposal done by Will Kleindings, and I have the drawings for that, I'll show you the drawing on the screen, but you can look at it afterwards too. There's a proposal to expand the story room on the south side of the building, to build an addition on the north side of the library, and then to add a 20,000-square-foot expansion on that south side for future use. And this is what it looks like. Harry, you might turn around and look at that one, what do you think?
And.
So, that.
I can see.
Oh, you can see it, okay.
This is actually closer, this is better from where I'm sitting.
So, and you can look at the real drawing here afterwards if you like, or now, you can get up, I don't.
So, this expansion, if we were doing it now, wouldn't be allowed because the building is potentially a Class One, it's Class Three, but it might be Class One.
Yeah, it's not yet. So, there's, there's no current restriction on the building. So, I'm just going through the history of what was proposed. So, whether or not that can be accomplished today, I don't know. But, so, the north side, there was a little expansion of reader rooms and restrooms, which is, makes me laugh. And then on the south side, that pink sliced area is for future use, and they didn't really define it, but they did build an expansion for the story room in this design, this idea.
And that's actually taking up some of the parking, right?
A little bit, you can see a little bit, here's my mouse, a little bit of the parking, just right in this area.
Five cars.
This is all currently patio sidewalk area and rose garden down here now. So, that's just on the south side of the building. So, it's kind of interesting to me. This is just fascinating, I didn't know about this one, I found this.
Did this plan change the orientation and entrance, or the?
No. It keeps it the same east entrance.
Okay.
Yeah, and it doesn't affect the, really, the view from sunrise, it just affects, it honestly closes up the pretty parts of the library on the north and south side, because I think those are the most beautiful views of the building on the north and south view.
And did this plan.
Nothing happened.
Relocate space or take away space that you have now?
The director.
It did, I think, yeah.
What?
The director.
I think it changed some things on.
One of my employees when I was at Miracle.
Yeah, you would have to look at it, I think it, maybe.
Because that looks like up there in the corner.
But 89, this one, I didn't even know existed, so. Okay, so then 1995, we actually did get a renovation, and you'll love this part, the money part, but we enclosed the west patio, there was a west patio, we enclosed it, I brought the photo album, and I have a few pictures in here too. We enclosed the west patio to become a quiet reading room, which had the magazines and newspapers. It was, the Friends of the Library donated money to pay for that part. The whole library got new carpet, it's the purple carpet we have now, and then we reconfigured the shelving layout. It cost $710,000, and it was all paid for by the trust fund and the Friends, as you see there. So, there's a picture of the library, that entrance at that time, and you'll notice the walls are really high, and later, those were cut down. Former director before me had those walls brought down to increase the view into the library. So, there's a picture of it in 1995, this is the patio, and it's currently the teen zone. So, this is what it looked like on the celebration day, there was no wall there. There's currently a wall and windows and a door that goes into that room, but that's the periodic room. So, that one actually happened. We got the purple carpet, rearranged the room, you can look at the photo album, fascinating. So, that one did happen. So, 2005, there was a proposal to do an expansion, to bring the total of the library to 60,000 square feet, again, doing expansions. This one only did expansions on the south side of the library, and I have the foam boards for that, and they have two options, and some, and actually, a proposed view of what the building would look like from the outside. It's a cute look to it, but.
I actually had a model too, but I don't know what happened to that.
Oh, okay, there was a model. Go ahead, Harry.
The previous one is the one that Barbara Roberts did, right?
No, this one, the 2005 is a Barbara Roberts.
I was confused as to which one it was, yeah.
Yeah, so this is the one from 2005. Note, the economy tanked in 2008, so that's part of the reason why this never happened. There was a recommendation, the mechanical, the report says the mechanical and the electrical systems are failing, they recommended adding fire sprinklers, they did focus groups, they compiled demographic data, the things that we needed, which nothing has changed, it's 14 years later, reader seats, computers, well, computers, community room, small meeting room, and more parking. To renovate was 18 million, to get a new library was 24 million, and.
What's that, I don't understand, new library?
They did a cost comparison, where if they renovated and expanded the current facility, it would cost 18.3 million, and to build a 60,000-square-foot brand-new facility at the time was 24 million. One of those things where we could almost buy new, you know? So, there's an elevation example, and I brought that one, you're welcome to come look at it.
The south and the east.
The south and the east elevations are the largest impact to this, is right?
Yes, it didn't, you couldn't, didn't really see a lot from the west or the north, just them in the background, but yeah, the east, the southeast corner was where the big addition was.
Okay.
For a community room.
Okay.
I think it looks cute.
And that space, that additional space was going to be all community room, or what was it going to be?
The entire south end, there was, you can see, let me show you a picture. Oh, here we go. Here's one, 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 two, three, okay. So, this one, this shows the library. Now, this brown space right here is the current patio, where it says teen services, that's our current community room, that says, that's our TLC. And then the old, the current building runs right along this area. And so, the, where it says new books, youth services, they moved the entry down and built a meeting room. So, that's one rendition, and then they renovated the existing spaces a little bit, rearranged things. This is one option at the time. This is a different view, a little bit different design, just an orientation of different rooms and stuff, so.
And can I make the assumption that during these evaluations, you guys were also looking at collection growth and where we were in the collection, projecting where it would go.
Yeah, demographic growth.
At that time, knowing how different, you know, it is now, but that was all incorporated in this plan, actually, all these stacks.
Julie was here, Julie did work here then.
Yeah.
Yeah, there were a lot of stacks here, a lot of computers.
Right.
If you think back to 2005, computers were heavily used, we had lines, people running in the building to get signed up for their computers. We don't see that as much now. Smartphones changed that need. So, we don't have as much demand for public computers as we did, but we have a demand for Wi-Fi and Wi-Fi printing.
We still had a reference collection.
Oh, yeah, Julie's saying at the time, we had a reference collection.
So, no reference.
Of physical books, and now we have more databases and online resources.
So, I mean, this kind of plan now, even though, I mean, that footprint is probably about what we would need in terms of potential, it's really reallocating some of those projections to different types of use instead of all those book stacks.
Obviously, yeah, this would be different, yeah, we would have to do something completely different, but it's neat to look at some ideas, and they included things like study rooms, and that's something that we need. We still need, have the need for study rooms, we have a need for restrooms, we have a need for a big community meeting room and some classrooms. We have a need for a big community meeting room and some classrooms. So this is, I, I'm not a super fan of this design with the, with the rooms in a row of...
What were those?
It looks like, uh, it's weird, like offices, staff area, off, yeah.
They tried to consolidate all of them.
Back of house?
Yeah, they tried to consolidate the back of house.
They tried to consolidate all the staff together 'cause they were spread out all throughout the library. So at the time, the thought was to try to have people together. Sorry.
So that's, um, that's one example. And then I wanted to point out, and this is another one I have. It's, it's a, it's so far, don't even pay, don't even worry about the building part. But look, look at the parking lot.
Where did that come from?
They cut right through the middle of Sunrise Park and connected down to the Boys and Girls Club in this design. And then turn, and then connected into their driveway down at the south.
Which didn't exist at the time.
Oh, that, that driveway didn't exist?
Right. That would still be... Where they added the light and that whole thing, the whole idea was to connect the Boys and Girls Club and the library and that, what exists now didn't exist then. So that was that thinking back then.
Yeah, so that, I wanted to show you this because there, there was a plan at the time to expand the parking all the way through the park.
Does that connect with the Mizell parking lot at the bottom?
No, it doesn't. Uh, I think it just connects to that, that Circle Drive at the Boys and Girls Club and that little parking lot on that end. So anyway, that was, um, I just wanted to show this because you might not have seen this or known that, that these options have been presented. It's funny, the things, the things that have been presented over the years are still carrying forward. We need study rooms, we need all these things. So, um, those are the different views. Now, in twenty thirteen, I was here. I, I started in twenty twelve. And, um, Group Four Architects, uh, was, they were hired and to, uh, to do a proposed renovation. They, uh, brought in a consultant, a librarian, Linda Demmer. She is a cons- professional consultant. And she did our programming, uh, evaluation and the, our program, the program, not events. But what we need at the library, how many seats we have, is our collection the right size? Is our library the right size? All of those things. She did this huge evaluation, which we have. Uh, this, the architects conducted, conducted fo- focus groups with, um, staff, community members, teens. I've got some cute pictures. Um, they reported that the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing systems are failing and that we need, our needs are more seats. We're, we're, we don't have enough seats for everybody who wants to use the library. Community room, small meeting rooms, more parking. At the time, the renovation costs were estimated to be fourteen point eight million. Now, um...
But can I ask you a question?
Yeah.
So far, I, I've not heard the R-word for retrofit for seismic, I mean...
It's in this one.
It's in this one?
Yes. And, uh, it only was triggered, there were, there were certain aspects of the seismic retrofitting that would be required. If we did a certain amount of renovations without moving load-bearing walls, then we wouldn't trigger a full retrofit. If we moved a load-bearing wall, we've triggered the full retrofit. And so that comes at an additional cost over this.
Do you know if this, if these plans tried their best not to move load-bearing walls?
Yes, we tried not to move load-bearing walls because of the cost. Yeah. And so I have a couple more pictures, and then I have some more information about this one. And go ahead, Craig, you have a question?
Does this include expansion or just...
No, this is a strictly stay within our footprint of thirty-four thousand square feet. And our consultant, Linda Demmer, said, "The size of your building is fine. Everything's just in the wrong place." And she said, "We can make it work in the thirty-four thousand square foot building." So that, um, we did, um, we did community input eve- we did an evening. Uh, I recognize a lot of people in this picture. Uh, we had, we had a focus group. This one's blurry, sorry, but it's, the only one I could find. It's a picture of the teens, and if you feed them, they will come. So we had pizza, they ate every slice of pizza that we had. But look at all those teens. It's a great group. They gave their input. They want one of those Scooby-Doo secret doors. And we thought that was hilarious. Um, we did the dots where you get, uh, a certain number of, of colored dots, and then you get to put it on what you think is important. And I'll show you this in the slideshow, but they want, they want a, they, regardless of where it is, they want something that, you know, they want a building that's spacious and inviting. They want comfortable seating. They want it acoustically zoned. They want some quiet space or someplace where they can be rowdy. Uh, we need lots of natural light. We need it to embrace technology, celebrate art, uh, have a connection to the outdoors, and have a nice street presence. And then someone created their own sign, and it says, um, "Demonstrates sustainability." I couldn't read it.
You've only got one dodge.
They made their own sign and created it. But it made it to the board. Oh, yeah, I thought that was funny. This is, this is the renovation proposal that they created. We did, um, we did keep the entrance in the same location. Uh, we added back the original south entrance. And then we also added a north entrance to get access to the bus stop because the bus stop is on the north side. But someone has to walk all the way out and around. And so we said, "Why not?" So, uh, we rearranged things a little bit, put, put some browsing collections in, on wheels in the, in the front, uh, created some items that could be mobile shelving. We could remove all of this and have a big event in the middle of the room. Created some group study rooms, uh, that were more like pods or freestanding, uh, rooms. We moved the children's room to the back of the library and then put the community room in the front and, uh, made a really nice room in the front. It's about a two hundred or two hundred and fifty-seat room.
So the kids weren't fond of the koi pond?
The koi pond, actually, in this proposal, was moved, uh, to a walking bridge. We, we moved them to the front.
Wow.
Because we thought they were cute. Everybody loves the koi.
Yeah.
Most people love the koi. And then, uh, my office turns into a toilet. Actually, all of our offices turned into re- public restrooms, uh, right in this area. And then, um, the staff get moved over into where the community room is and gets rearranged into some staffing spaces. And, um, and the teens get their own beautiful space at the north end of the building.
Where is tech services at this?
Um, I don't know.
They moved to TLC.
Down in this area, I think.
Uh-huh, part of, yeah, big spaces, like a tech services.
Yeah.
And none of these ever considered, were, were, at any time, were any of these considering what to do with John Frey, the Frey Building at all?
No.
Hmm.
Um, there was one, uh, in the two thousand and five, yeah.
Think, put it on your microphone.
Oh, yeah, sorry.
She's right, that's true.
Um, in the two thousand and five one, um, they had talked about recommissioning the Frey Building, um, and then, um, using the, some of that for, um, they talked about having it be classrooms, and they also talked about it having to be a standalone, like, teen center. Um, so those two issues were discussed at that time.
What was the range of costs in seismic?
I don't know for sure. So I'm, I'm not sure.
Because the fourteen million would go up substantially.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, um...
It also turned out that, uh, wage rates they had used weren't, um, David Bacon.
They weren't prevailing wage and...
That fourteen is just...
This is right before the law passed, I think, if I remember.
Yeah, 'cause Davis Bacon's gonna add four, five thousand dollars.
Million.
For salaries for construction.
Okay, so...
Thirty percent, I think, at least, minimum thirty.
And this is six years ago now, so add, I don't know...
Inflation, yeah.
Four percent a year. So we're talking twenty-five percent more just to do this, I think.
And finding construction markets.
So considering the effects of the two thousand and eight recession weren't really over in two thousand and thirteen, how was this flying?
Measure J, I think. I think. So what happened was, uh, city council saw fourteen million and they, uh, had a stroke, I think. Just my opinion, I think. They just said, "This is too much. We, we don't have the money." So they tasked our architects with developing lower-cost models. They said, "Come up with an eight, ten, or twelve million dollar plan." They couldn't get it down to eight at all. And they said, "The cheapest we can find, we can squeeze this out, is nine. Nine, ten, and twelve million dollar plan." And then what happened was that College of the Desert suddenly decided they were going to build the West Valley Campus, and this stopped because the potential to work with College of the Desert sidelined this project. We said, "Let's wait and find out."
I, I'm also curious, in all of the pricing, and I can't remember the last time we looked at pricing, that was before, when I was here, were they...
This one.
At any time, did someone figure out what it would cost to temporarily relocate the building and have service going somewhere else while they totally renovated a building? Was that all part of this budget, or is that...
No, not at all.
We never talked about that?
No, we, yeah, we never got that far.
'Cause that's, that's several years of being somewhere else, right? Paying rent?
It's possible, yeah. When I, when I was at Palm Desert Library, we did a renovation, and we moved to the mall. And it was, how many, Lisa was there, too? Well, you came in to open, uh, eighteen months?
Yeah.
Was it a year, twelve months? Twelve to eighteen months of renovation. And, um, we got the mall location free of charge. They donated the space. We had to move two times because they rented the space. So, uh, there's a possibility that that could be, uh, we could find a generous donor to, to give us a storefront that's vacant. Um, we, we just hadn't evaluated that at all. We never got that far.
Just wanted to be clear that...
But that is, that is a consideration.
That's a lot of costs.
Yes, there's a consideration to, to include that, um, because you will have, we, we could operate a city without a library, but that would be really sad and...
No.
Which of these plans would have worked for you now if any of them had been done?
That's a, I really am interested in the two thousand and five plan, the expansion, with a nice community room on the end. Uh, because that's what we're doing more and more of, our, our programming for our community and coming up with, uh, interesting lectures and, um, classes and activities. We're more, we feel like a community space. Yes. And Julie's saying, we are getting, uh, the, the requests we deny a lot of our, to partner with other groups to do events, larger events at our space. We, we, we had a wonderful event. We, we, our community room holds a hundred people. We turned away two hundred people. It's really sad. And so we, we have a, a nice demand for, um, for, for community space. Now, and you were here, Harry, you were here in twenty seventeen. We said, "Let's, let's see what we can do now." And, um, the city, uh, con- cont- contacted our local architects of record and, um, got requests, uh, and requests for proposals from Gensler and Yerudia. And, um, this is their, this was their scope. So phase one, they were supposed to prepare drawings, um, secure approval from the, the necessary committees and commissions, have meetings, uh, meet, meet with us to find out what we needed and all of those things. And then they, and prepare technical specs and prepare a final cost estimate. That's, that's all of that phase one. The quotes came in at, um, seven hundred and thirty thousand dollars or a million just to prepare those plans. And then you, the Library Board of Trustees, voted to pause this because we didn't know what we were doing as far as staying or looking for a new site. So this, this was just, uh, a quick proposal that was never explored and no plans were ever developed or, uh, or done. And then, if you want, I can show you real quick the twenty...
When you say two thousand and seventeen, that was the council with Ginny Fote and Chris Mills and JR and who was on the council at that point in time, twenty seventeen? Which council was it? That's just a question.
Yes.
It was Chris, it was Ginny.
The one before this?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah. We said we...
Just trying to assist.
Steve was mayor at the time, Steve Pugniet.
No.
Fifteen?
No, Robert.
He was mayor through fifteen.
His manager pointed me, said he was mayor.
Yeah. But it wasn't the current council, the current full council, it was part of the old and part of the new. So this is, um, this was the proposal in twenty thirteen. Uh, I won't cover everything, uh, on here because it's a s- extremely long presentation, but I wanted to show you some, uh, really nice, um, the floor plan. And this was, um, what Group Four Architects did in twenty thirteen. So they, um, they talked about libraries and, and how we can plan and by putting things on wheels or building a raised floor so that you can change the technology as it, as it changes. And so plan, this is how you've, well, they call it future-proofing. This is how you future-proof your library. And, uh, you see that, that room on the side. Those walls collapse so that if it's, if you don't need it to be a meeting room, it's just part of the library. So they talked about the live, this, the community and our project goals. And, uh, again, I don't, I don't want to take up too much time 'cause this is, this is, um, out of date. But they did do the needs assessment. That one's stuck. Hold on. Just did this earlier.
This is very helpful.
Okay, thank you.
Must have taken a long time, too.
It was fascinating for me to find, to find things I didn't know about the seventy-seven and the nineteen eighties proposals. This thing's acting up. Maybe I won't do it.
So when is the last time any renovation was done on the library? Is that seventy-seven?
Nineteen ninety-five was when we got new carpet and closed in that room. Oh, this is not working. Oh, I know what I need to do. I need to close this one. It doesn't like to open at the same time. That's what I figured out. Because of that. Okay, try this again. Okay, so they talked about the problems, uh, things, all of the things I talked about. This is, the, the library building's thirty-four thousand square feet. I'll skip through that. And I'm happy to share this with you, if you don't have it already, um, on a memory stick or something. They talk about the marketplace, how, um, people love browsing. Uh, I love looking at these pictures, too. Uh, how spaces are now open and, um, and collaborative and, and whatnot. Children's space, so beautiful. And also, um, in the upper left-hand corner, that's like a storytime stage. It doesn't necessarily have to be a completely enclosed story room that's only used once or twice a week. It could be a corner of your existing room so that the space is maximized for most use. Teens, of course, they need a space that's fun and inviting and, um, bright and colorful. And of course, we all love technology and having a place to come in and study or print or get help with your technology needs. Meeting rooms for us, we, we definitely needs, need this. And this was an example on this lower left-hand side of the walls sliding away so that if it's not needed as a, as a meeting space, it's just part of the study area of the library. These were the, um, design values that were, um, pulled out in the focus groups, and they talked, and I talked about the little stickers and the dots. Of course, uh, everything needs to be spacious and inviting. We love comfortable seating. And that, talked about having different spaces where you could have a collaborative, louder space or some space to be quiet and studious. Natural lighting is, it, if you don't have natural lighting at Pump Springs, I don't know why. We've got plenty of natural light. And so we would have to, obviously, uh, work to make sure that that's not too hot. You know, Goldilocks, not too hot, not too cold. And art is very important for our community, and there, there's a wonderful, there are plenty of ways for us to, to embrace art and celebrate that. And then connecting to the outdoors. In the winter, it's, it's great to be outdoors. So we need, if we can, to include that space. it's great to be outdoors. So we need, if we can, to include that space. And then have a really nice street presence so that we can find, so that people can find us and know that we're there. Those are the green dot values that they did. And it's interesting, they, almost 60 people voted for embracing technology. So those are the, that's the ranking right there on the screen. And comfortable. Okay, so the site, we are in Sunrise Park, near the high school. They talk about parking and our location. And I, that was-
The option.
We talked about the different options. Do we want to keep one option with the east entrance? Do we want to move it just to the north? Do we want to have it just to the south? Do we want to have two entrances there, two entrances there? And we, the consensus of all of the groups was that we need to have three entrances. We talked about having a parking lot on the north and it was voted, people said, no, we don't need parking up there. But that was the consensus, that we could expand the parking down on the south side and then open up all three sides of the library for entrance. So that was the entry options that were voted on. And then our parking lot, they did evaluate the parking lot space and we have 127 parking spaces. And I think this one, we are short, they did an estimation based on whatever standards there are. I think they picked retail. I think, I think they considered this a retail equivalent. And we're about 100 parking spaces short, just for us, not counting if there's a baseball game or a health fair happening at Mizel or anything. So we are short. Here we go. And this was an example, if we increased the parking down on this south end, we would have 220 spaces. So that would help us get to what we needed. The floor plans, we had different options. We did the bubble plans where you just do different arrangements. And we voted on A2, which is the one I'll show you. It is with the meeting space in the, on your screen on the lower left side, children's in the left, teens in the upper, and then staff down on the lower left, as you see there. And this is a more closed-in view. They talked about having a cafe, bringing the customer service desk right here so that people could walk in and browse, but then get the help they needed if they need it at this point.
Well, if you had three entrances, I would-
This is a good-
Have a central spot.
This is a good sightline. We would have a desk here and then a desk at the south end. And then between the two of them, they could kind of see the north end. And then we would have to have security gates for our materials, for all of those things. And then having some self-check station. I could be wrong.
Did the meeting room have its own entrance?
Yeah.
To the outside?
And then we capitalized on the patio, too.
Yeah, so this little area is like a gallery, an art gallery space and like a pre-function area. And then this is something that could be locked off. We talked about locking this, like-
Exactly.
Creating like a mall, maybe a gate or something where you could close off the main part of the library and then have this lobby area open for functions and then have this door locked so you could still access restrooms and have the function space with outdoor patio space for receptions.
And do you know if this plan had already been certified as having no bearing on load-bearing walls?
This one, we did not move load-bearing, did we? We have one where we did move load. Maybe this was it.
I think this is it.
Because we took out the story room.
Oh, because of the center thing, we had to take out.
We took out the story room.
Hmm.
Yeah, and there was a load-bearing wall right here. So this one was the most costly.
Yeah.
But it's the most beautiful, of course.
Isn't that always the case?
Here's a more, here's the rest of the, they did a more focused group of the showing of the meeting room and the meeting terrace for functions and receptions and the gallery with the little catering kitchen and restrooms and whatnot. So it's-
Has the current library been evaluated for seismic?
It was in this. They had civil engineers.
How unsafe is it for you guys?
As far as I am comprehending it, it is okay. I mean, earthquakes.
It doesn't meet current standards.
They won't red-tag it till after.
They'll do it after.
Do not, I do not stand in the stacks during an earthquake.
Move out of that.
No, it doesn't like it.
Our signs, they move out of the stacks during an earthquake.
No, I just was wondering how safe you guys are, because that's-
Mm-hmm.
Are the stacks attached to the ground?
Yes. They are bolted into the concrete.
It's still with-
They were, they were not originally, I read. They were not originally bolted to the floor. That's crazy. Okay, so here's, here's a close-up of the children's area. I'll move along a little quicker on this. Staff area. And then this is a view from the street. This is from Sunrise. And they converted the patio wall into an art wall. I think it's very beautiful. I have some concerns about the fact that it's a ladder, but it's beautiful and it has our name.
The concept.
Yeah. And that's just another view. This is what it would look like on the inside when you walk into that first service desk, when you look to the right, looking towards the children's, which is now our current computer room. That is in the current computer room, but that would become the story room, children's. Yeah, it's one of those spaces where when it's not a storytime, it's open for anybody to sit. Another marketplace view. This is looking south. They would create these birds-on-a-wire purchase for studying in that area. And that's the south desk. And that's the view of the gallery and the community room from that front entrance. I think it's ni, I think it looks nice. The costs, there you go. So there's, there's-
That could be yours?
That was-
13, 2013.
2013. So we are six now? They did do an escalation estimate, but-
But without prevailing waves.
Right.
You're basically-
Twenty-four.
That 14's 21.
Yeah.
And then you've got seismic.
Plus surprises-
Yeah.
That you find. So anyway, that was-
Temporary location as well, so.
Right. If we, I think the Fri building would be a nice temporary location. If we got that fixed up, then if we had to go to-
I really don't think you-
It's so small.
I don't think you could serve the community based on the stats you provide every month in that very long.
Well, maybe we'd have multiple temporary locations. Maybe we'd do some community center partnerships or something within our own city facilities. And that was, that was it. That was the 2013 presentation. So I wanted to make sure, and I learned some things. I didn't know there were a couple of other options, but I wanted to make sure that you knew the progression and you're all on the same page. And I hope it's helpful and I'm happy, we have files, like the binders from some of the architects. So if there's more that you'd like to look at, we can get it for you.
That was well done.
Well, thank you.
I think that you definitely have given us, you know, all some update here on what has been thought of through the years and, you know, I think that's, considering the space that we have there, I don't think there's many more options to look at, right? I mean, for that space.
Well, we have some choices of, some ideas, some brainstorming. And when I was hired in 2012, that was the, that was the hot topic, was that we are going to renovate or do something. And here we are.
It didn't happen.
I am ready.
So, I mean, if you bring us to the last conversation that we had as a group, so Harry and I are the two remaining, it really came down to when we looked at the cost estimations for renovating that building is when we said, whoa, wait a minute. If we're going to spend 20, 25 million to renovate an existing facility, wouldn't it be wise for us to look at what other options exist? Now, by the way, that, we had no options. And actually, we didn't even have an option to renovate. We didn't have the money then, so-
And we didn't have a foundation to raise.
And to be sitting here thinking we now have additional options, it's a miracle in my mind because we've come a long way. So I think that it also spurred the conversation of updating the strategic plan because it really wanted, we needed to make sure that we were looking at a facility to meet the expectations of the community. So kind of all at the same speed that we are now. Though we didn't go back in time for that. This is the first time I've seen all those.
I can't believe I found 1977.
I haven't seen those.
Yeah.
I hadn't, I didn't know those were there. I found them.
Any questions, thoughts, guys, for Ginny or staff?
Well, I think it's going to be useful for the building committee-
Yes.
-to start, especially for the architects that'll be on the building committee, to take a look at it.
Yeah.
And the hardest question is, would any of this work for you or what the city wants now versus building you and the money? It's also a money question. Where do you get money?
My experience, many years ago, when I was in San Francisco, and Harry, you speak to, you know, years, you have many more years than I do. I mean, we went through the same evaluation. We looked at updating a Bozart building that had been built shortly after the earthquake. It was designed as a library, but it, you know, we had, we had patrons sitting in hallways because we just had overgrown the building and had modified it so many times that it just wasn't a functioning building. And the biggest thing that we got from the community is the heartstrings. They loved that building. They loved, you know, as children going to the main library, you know, oh my gosh, I remember as a kid, you know, there was all those ties, I think, which we're going to hear the same thing in our community as well. And it was just the whole process, well, it was a library then, but it's not a library anymore. And that was, that was our biggest challenge in San Francisco. And having renovated all those branches, I remember the same thing. We had to stay within that footprint. It's, it's great. Thank you. Anything else you want to add or staff? Anything that, since you guys lived through this process?
We have lots of lists of needs and things. So we, yes, we're familiar with what we would like.
So I would say, I know that you're going to have this prepared for the first committee, building committee-
It's ready.
You'll have to redo this presentation again for that group. I think that's going to be real enlightening for that group to go through this as well and see what's been proposed in the past. Thank you.
I think what would be useful for them is what your sense of what you need now is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. Okay, thank you. That was, that was great. Appreciate it. So we have some other business to discuss. We have the contract extension, scope of work, as well as the funding and some items. So we've got on the agenda, since it feels like we haven't met in a long time, but if you guys will recall, the, I was charged with going back to the consultants with some of the feedback that you guys had given me on the last revision. I spent some time with Sue Hall highlighting, I hope you guys had time to review. And can we move to just discussing, this would be 10B, the contract extension, to see if you guys have any further questions about this? The, I will also let you know that as I was working on this, both Lisa and Christie reviewed it and weighed in in anticipation of the building committee being supported by this proposal. So I've had their input as well. So did you guys have any questions, comments from the last meeting and from where we are today?
I have one feedback from just about the city's schedule. If you do approve this, we have to work on the extension or extension of their existing contract and take it to the September 18th City Council meeting because that's the very next time that they meet. So I just wanted to give you that timeline-
Sure.
That I'll have to get it to City Council, you know, a couple of weeks before that.
So this, ladies and gentlemen, presents a problem for us because the building committee will probably meet in the next week or so, based on the schedule we just heard from Lisa. I anticipated that, by the way. So I, in talking with Library Strategies, they recognize that they have to go through. And I'm going to anticipate that extension process could take 30 or 60 days.
Not necessarily. It's just the September 18th.
Council.
You hope that at that, they would vote to approve it in September?
They'd put it on consent calendar and vote to approve.
So-
I don't anticipate a problem there.
I, but that's still-
And they said, if you're paying for it, they don't anticipate a problem.
That's still about, you know, a month and a half away and a lot of work's going to have to be done with the building committee. Bottom line is that Library Strategies felt like that if this was the scope of work and they were confident that we were going to move forward with an extension, they were prepared to work with us before that contract was approved. So we, they understand they may have to jump in and help us as well, so.
What money are we paying for? We're not paying for this with foundation money. We're paying it with Prop J money?
Yes, well, that's the next topic. We need to talk about that. So if there's nothing else about this, I'd like for us to vote to approve this scope of work.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. So now, this scope of work will go to staff and Ginny will start the extension process with Library Strategies, correct? So we now know that this, you should have all the work done and be prepared to go to City Council on the 18th. Of course, I'll help you if I need anything we can do to help. But hopefully, this is the big start to that extension, right, that you'll have to have?
Yeah.
Okay. So let's talk about the funding, which is 10C. And what I wanted to say about this before we started discussion is I think that you guys, we've already seen examples today where the trust fund has been used to even pay for construction in our past.
Paid for the new air conditioning.
It's paid for a lot of things.
Paid for the new roof.
New roof, sorry.
It's paid for the patio that's not yet done at the wellwood. So we've used that funds and we, the previous trustees were getting concerned about, you know, the using that money up. I mean, it's not unlimited, as we all know. And so I discussed that with Sue. I said, what is your experience in this situation? She says, well, first of all, you're very lucky that you've got some money that you could use to get started if you had to. She says, but I strongly suggest to the trustees that any money that comes out of that trust fund for any of these projects should be considered a loan to get these projects started and that the foundation would be on the hook for recovering and replacing those funds.
The foundation or the city?
Or, you're right. In our case, we do have Measure J. So-
We do have an owner, yes.
So at this point, I have a question for staff, and I don't know the answer to this. If we were to ask Measure J to pay for this, would that be part of the extension process that you would identify that we want to use the Measure J funds to pay for this extension?
I would have to explore that. I don't know.
Didn't they allocate some money toward this planning process?
Yes, we do. However, in my conversations with Lisa in particular, we really do need the consultant support to get this building committee started. We don't want to wait for an extension or a discussion about, well, we may or may not have Measure J. My recommendation to the trustees, and we'll open up for discussion, is that we're prepared to use trust funds to pay for this extension with the understanding that we're also going to be trying to get Measure J funds to pay for it instead. But I want to commit to the consultants that we have funding for this. They need to know they're going to have money, right?
So moved.
And then from there, I think that we have to have a conversation with the foundation on, as early as Monday, about how their role is going to kick in to help support this as well. So let me stop there.
I think you should look more at Measure J.
That should be our first option.
That should be the first option. Sue should cover these costs.
If Measure J comes back and says, sure, you guys have the money allocated and it will be part of this extension, we're, I think we're all in agreement, correct? If they say that that process may be, may take us longer than what the time we have for here, I'm hoping that we could agree that we would use the trust funds to cover that.
It makes sense.
Can I add something?
Absolutely, please.
Okay. So first of all, I think that, you know, having, the consultants are doing a wonderful job. And I think that they probably recognize by this point that we're committed to using them. And I don't think that there's been any discussion at all that it seems as if the city or this board was interested in ending their contract at any time. So, and I think Councilman, Councilperson Middleton just stated at the end of her thing here was that the council is on board with the consultants. And given the extension of the Measure J funds and the discussion that the City Council had earlier this year about us using it for strategic planning, I can't imagine why these funds couldn't be used. I think, in my opinion, it's been, you know, when I first heard about Measure J funds being approved years ago and then not being utilized, and then when I was sitting here that we were actually being asked to actually- that we were actually being asked to, to actually propose actual uses for it current, you know, immediately, or else we were gonna lose those funds entirely, that it makes me think that perhaps in the past, there were instances where we could have asked for city council assistance on things like a roof or some of these things, and we missed that opportunity. And I really think that's a, a habit that this board has to break. And given the fact that we've had these discussions and all of these funds are available at this point, and given the fact that our consultants know that we're well on board, I don't think a delay in six weeks is gonna be that terrible for them. Although I do recognize the fact that this building committee is, has a charge to also produce a whole lot before that September.
Correct.
Or the end of September date.
Correct.
So there's gonna be at least a two-week period between that city council meeting and the building committee's presentation to this body where they're, they're, they're at least, in, in my estimation, they're gonna be working from actually being paid. So it's a matter of getting to that, nearly that two-week period where it's crunch time. And I think at that point, if you made a presentation to them that we could get some assurances perhaps before everybody disappears for August, that, that, you know, during that two-week crunch time that they're gonna be paid, then maybe that'll be better. But I do agree, you know, the thing, the other thing that, that probably needs to be discussed too is, you know, and I understand this loan situation, I, I don't know from a city perspective whether or not we, you know, 'cause it took a long time to actually get this loan together for the foundation. I don't know if we're in a position legally to make a loan to, I don't know, who's the loan going to?
Well.
To the foundation again?
Let me clarify. So what I think we have to discuss today is that we're gonna ask staff to process this extension, requesting that Measure J funds that have been approved will cover the cost of this extension with the contract. If that's okay, we're good. If they come back and say anything other than we can't do that, I think we have to be prepared to approve that we're gonna use trust funds to pay for this extension since we've paid for the original contract. And I want, I want staff to know that they, we're guaranteeing that we'll pay for this extension either from the trust fund, one way or the other.
But I would be hard pressed to see what, under what circumstance Measure J funds couldn't be used.
Agreed.
I mean, really. I mean, I would just raise.
I have no idea.
All kinds of questions about that.
So let me, let me go back to what the consultant said. So in, in the consultants, their recommend, and their recommendation will be, when they work with the building committee, by the way, is that when it comes to funding of the project for non-city funds, everything should be on the table included in that, including this planning process. So when we go to the foundation and say, we need you to raise this much money, that's included so that the trust fund is replenished, the foundation would put it, put that money back into the trust fund, is what they, and they, we can make a contribution to the trust fund at any time, and it happens all the time. So it's the, and also the compact that needs to be created between the foundation and the city is part of the process that will kick in as far as the building committee, it's part of their charge. And that will establish the process by which money can move back and forth. Make sense?
Yeah, sure.
Yeah.
Do you want to?
Yeah, I need a clarification on this.
Sir?
I'm looking at the proposal on page five, and I'm assuming those are the funds that we're talking about.
That is correct.
So we're looking at $52,500 plus travel expenses. Do, right?
By the way, the city does not allow for that. Is that, is that correct?
We, the city does not encourage unspecified expenses. They can't say just plus expenses because they need a, they need a stopping point.
Right.
And not to exceed.
And it's a great question. So this, this extension, as the previous contract we have in place now, we, the trustees helped create what we needed for that, that contract. It then went to procurement who did all the city stuff to it. So the city's gonna go through here and they're gonna specify the, the budget, how it's to be paid. So they haven't done that part yet. This is just us saying, this is what the consultants have identified with our help that we need them to do. So it, as a matter of fact, what we did for the last contract is we gave them not to exceed. We said to the consultants, we are awarding this contract, and we gave them a budget and said, you can't go over that. Use it for whatever you need, you just can't go over that. And the city was okay with that.
Okay, and I'd feel more comfortable with that. This looks like a blank check almost, so within your proposal of moving ahead.
Making the 52, 52.5 the maximum amount of the contract is.
As a matter of fact, the trustees approved a higher amount last time, and we got them negotiated down from that. So, you know, there's, there could still be some evens, some room on that, so.
I'm just looking at what, what you want the motion to be, because what, what I wanna do is do a motion that authorizes us to do two things. One, ask Measure J and the city for these funds and have you go forward with that, and also look at the backup guarantee. And just because we're dealing with a bureaucracy that is, that can take time, I'm assuming that occasionally there are hiccups, that we have some kind of backup guarantee so that we know that the building committee can begin its work and move forward. So that's the motion. I'm just asking what dollar amount you want me?
Fifty-two.
Fifty-two, five.
That's, I just wanted to clarify, that's what they are listing about, listing the consultant price. That does not seem to include travel.
That does not, does not include travel.
So do we want to do a dollar amount that would include travel?
That's what we should.
I believe we should, yes.
So we would do 52.5 plus?
Are we sure, are we sure that this 52.5 is what's going to be spent between now and September 30th?
It will be, this is tied to the first phase of the building committee, so, you know, there was really no time, well, 35 days of consultant days is what they're projecting, of course, and so that would.
That's not 35 calendar days, though.
No, no, that's, you know, that's their.
And they have three consultants?
Yes.
That are working on this, so it's $1,500 per consultant.
Are they gonna be able to complete this, these 35 days by October?
They have to.
They have to.
And I would say.
We have to, they have to.
Okay.
Their travel for the January retreat was almost $10,000, just for that one trip.
So.
And they brought three consultants to that.
So why don't we make this?
Well, that included their consultant, sorry, to interrupt, that included their consultant days for 1,500. So that was 45 times two, so not, but then there was travel, so.
So the travel was 5,500, if theirs was 40.
Roughly, I think so.
So if we make this, because we don't know how, how many times they might have to come out, if we add 10,000 for travel, it would allow a couple of trips. So if we make the motion for 62.5 as the request to the city, it's, it's the overall.
Including all expenses.
Including all.
Not to exceed.
Not to exceed, and not to exceed amount. So we're looking at 62.5, does that, and that that's the Measure J request?
Mm-hmm.
That we'll move forward, and then we will reluctantly pay for that if we'll make some kind of backup guarantee to pay for it, and then work with the foundation to raise it.
Yes.
In the event that the city doesn't cover it.
All right, I will second that, as long as there's still negotiations to possibly even move it down more.
Absolutely, because once procurement gets this, they will have a conversation with them about that, so.
Okay, so I second.
Any discussion, further discussion?
Yeah, I, you know, 'cause I'm still a little uncomfortable, and I, and I will support this motion, but I'm, you know, given that if there's another request that requires something that I feel comes out of a strategic planning budget that's Measure J because, and doesn't, I'm gonna be very upset. And, and I think if we get turned down for using Measure J funds on this, that we're gonna have to get some very explicit reasons as to why.
I agree with you on that.
Yeah, agreed too.
This is our first step in terms of a good relationship with Measure J.
And we've already paid a chunk.
Right.
Of the trust fund.
I wonder if we can reverse out of the Measure J funds the money we've already paid?
What, what would, what would I think?
Well.
No, the first.
No, the first, the first contract.
I was actually thinking about that.
I think we should make that request.
Because when we, when we did the original contract, the Measure J funds weren't available to us. So I think in this expiration, we should see.
Yeah, and.
We have $125,000, 125,294 set aside for library planning.
So the second motion that I would make, we've just made one, and maybe you want to vote on it, but I would just say that my second motion would be to make a request as well to Measure J to the city to reimburse for the original dollars that we put in.
Let's vote on the first one, and then I'll second.
Or we can put those two together.
Can I ask a question?
I would keep them separate.
The first 40,000 was for strategic planning, but that wasn't, a strategic plan wasn't part of a building renovation.
Yeah, that's true.
Or building project. That was just our straight strategic plan.
But it is part of the building.
It's part of this whole idea, whether or not we're staying or whether we're going.
It's part of the whole idea, yeah.
I say we ask.
Okay, yeah.
The worst thing is to say no. We've already spent the money, and it was for a good cause, and it got us an end product.
It's a good cause, and it'd be better to put it back in the fund.
That was $37,000.
And we can ask the foundation to replace that as well. Don't forget, we have a foundation that we can say, we'd like for you to replenish the money we spent for the strategic plan, so I, got no problem with that as well, so.
So the first motion, are we calling it? Did we vote?
No, we did.
No, we did not.
No, we did not. We had discussions.
First and the second for 62,500.
Not to exceed, the 62,500, out of Measure J funds that we've already approved and has been accepted by the Measure J committee. So all in favor of that?
Aye.
All right, that's gonna be our first request.
Now, my second request, and I don't know the dollar amount, 37,000?
37,000.
It was 37.
37. So a request that we be reimbursed from the Measure J planning funds for the 37,000 that we expended doing the strategic plan and getting us to this point.
Now, let's have a discussion about that. Let's, let's balance our checkbooks. Should the planning, I, I, my only concern is should the building committee need other professional services? We've pretty much almost used up $125,000, right?
Then Measure J should give more.
No.
I mean, it's.
I mean, if we, 62 plus 35 is.
I think it's important to ask for this money for no other, for no other reason than to see, you know, to, to just get a response.
Yeah.
It's $99,500.
Yeah, which leaves us.
26,000.
That's not very much.
That's not very much, but it's, it, I think it is good to do that because there are costs, and it's worthwhile conserving the funds that we have.
Okay.
We'll need those for the building.
And these, right, and these funds have been promised in advance. We did go to them with what we needed. Let's, let's see, and then we'll, we'll see if we get it.
Yep.
Okay.
I mean, honestly, like I said before, I mean.
You gotta ask.
We, we've gotta ask, and then, you know, I can't say why it happened, but there was more, more money allocated to the library for Measure J at some point or another.
There was.
And somehow, nobody asked to use it.
Nobody asked to use it, and we would've had more money allocated to us this last time.
If we had used it.
If we had used it, or we had, we had made an ask for the money they put aside for us. They did also put aside another million for this year for the, for the library that's being held, so.
In defense of previous trustees who aren't here.
I'm not blaming them.
And for two of us who aren't here, the reason why, actually, it's my recollection, staff correct me here, but the roof repair was, the city just did not have the funds. They came to us and said, we need the funds.
Well, that was waiting for Measure J.
Right. So there's an example where they, you know what I mean?
Nobody's being critical of that.
And I'm not, I'm not, I'm just, I wanna answer the question, and I think that in the past for the Measure J funds, why they were having, sitting there is because we've been, as you just saw, we've been, went through all these options and plans, and no one bothered to say, let's make a, you know, let's put this on paper and ask for the money to do it.
Yeah, but clearly that 37,000 should've been spent by Measure J funds.
It should've been spent by Measure J funds, so I think we ask for it. Is this gonna cost money? We're going to ask for some money, they'll be next year's allocations. We should just be, we should be asking to replenish so that we at least know we have some money to spend on the building.
You know, I always.
I am, I am only being devil's advocate here, so.
Well, when, when I was working in libraries, if you don't ask for it.
You don't get it.
You don't get it.
You forget, I had 20 years in libraries, so I know. But I, I just, I wanna make sure that starting already, we, we got a budget, right? So, and by the way, that reallocation on Measure J was us. We decided to split it that way because we wanted to use some of that money to actually make changes.
And we don't know, we don't know what we're gonna be able to use on the Frye building either, so.
Correct.
We may do some reallocation of that money if it can't, it can't work out, so let's, but let's, this, this right now is our priority.
Okay.
So let's try and, let's try and do it and do it right and ask.
So I, I don't, I don't think we necessarily need a, a, a motion to direct staff to do that. I think we should just say that to the staff when they're identifying, don't we?
I think we need a motion.
We have a motion.
Are you sure?
There's a motion on the table.
To reimburse ourselves?
Yeah, to reimburse, yeah, for the 37,000.
Yeah.
Okay, so we're, so can someone please make a motion?
She did, and I seconded it.
Can you restate your motion, please?
My motion would be to ask Measure J, which means to ask the city at the same time that they're going to the September, September, what, 13?
Eighteenth.
Eighteenth meeting, to make that same request and to work that through so that when it goes to the city for the contract, it will cover both pieces separately, but cover both pieces.
Okay.
And they can say yes to one and no to the other if they want to.
No, they should say yes to both.
I agree. I agree with that.
You are a good.
Are you hearing us out there? Okay, so can I get a second on that motion?
You have a second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
I have a point, a clarification question.
Go for it.
About the motion before, the 62,500.
Correct.
The actual motion, you talked about requesting Measure J to pay, but did you specifically say that the trust fund would cover it until?
The guarantee for the consultants is that the trust fund will cover it if we, if we're not reimbursed for Measure J.
I just wanted to be clear that that was in.
But it's not.
I think that's good faith.
That isn't our, our.
It's not our first choice.
Information to the city.
If the consultants are going to come out and work for us, I, they need to know they're gonna get paid one way or the other. And so I, I think that we need to let them know that.
Yeah, we have to.
We're gonna cover the cost of this.
That we value them and they will be paid.
I just wanted to be sure that that was the way you intended.
And the reason I have to say to guys, the, the consultant shared with me, and I'm no, no bash on staff here, but, and their final bill for the last plan, they, it was held up for three cents. I mean, so, you know, they're, they're, I think that they're a little, you know, I don't know what happened, but there was some reconciliation.
I know exactly what happened.
Okay, so.
The hotel did some funky billing on their bill, and the receipt didn't match the actual charge.
So they, they've been going back and forth trying to get that resolved. So, they, they've been going back and forth trying to get that resolved, so I just wanna make sure they understand there's still money there to pay them, so, all right, anything else with that, I think we've covered A, B, C, D, and E.
Do we have any sense of what the schedule that you would like to see for the building committee is, have you talked that through with Lisa and Christie?
Not yet, no, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, today I'll reach out to Dr. Reddy, make sure that, you know, what, what does he have in mind, 'cause I assume he's gonna pull that group together very quickly.
I've already gotten questions about how it's gonna be, if it's publicly noticed, which I think Lisa and Christie said it was, and people wanna sit in, so I'm not, I just said I have no idea.
I don't know.
You know, I'm assuming it's publicly noticed, and I, although it doesn't have to be, but I'm assuming it is, and, but, so, the public, when we set the meetings up, they'll have to be, what, there's a day that you have to do notice?
Ten days.
That's usually what it is.
We have seventy-two hours, I think, according to the Brown Act, to, to post a notice, a special meeting, it depends if it's an emergency, it's a twenty-four hour notice, but we always try to do way more than that.
Yeah, anyway, so just, just, if we're gonna make it, and I know that we don't have to, because it's ad hoc, but if it is, we just need to make sure that the city also does noticing.
Okay, all right, let's move to number eleven, report from staff.
Uh-huh, one moment, I, just a second. I wanted to make a note about the noticing, okay, we concluded our summer reading program, we had a wonderful, record-breaking year, we had over fifteen hundred registrations.
Amazing.
And that was a record.
How many children and how many adults?
Six, twenty-nine, and six. We had, did we have more adults than children?
Yes, we did.
Well, we count teens separately, we had over two hundred teens, and then we had about six hundred and some of children and six hundred and some of adults.
Wow.
And we were stunned, in a great way, that we had more adults, so it's great, they're bringing, they're coming, they're bringing their children, coming to events, gave away books, thousands of books we gave away, seventeen, seventeen thousand dollars, we got a twenty thousand dollar grant from the Anderson Children's Foundation, that did come in, and we gave away books, and so that was so much fun, and gave away our prizes, we had a huge grand finale celebration with a celebrity impersonator, and it was just so much fun, and Sustainability Commission was there, and they helped give away the bicycles that they donated, and the friends of the library were there, and they helped do the prize drawings for the prizes that they donated, so much fun. We are on a little hiatus, like everyone else, getting ready for the fall, our, we do have some youth programming that's gonna start again in mid-August, our storytimes, and then our DIY afternoons, and then our regular programming will, for teens and adults, computer classes and whatnot, are going to resume in September. We are currently an official cool center with Riverside County, and they are delivering water and snacks for us to give, give away for, for people needing a cool place to come to the library, and, and then we are partnering with Desert AIDS Project to do Get Tested, and so we are offering rapid, free rapid HIV testing and hepatitis C testing at the library, they are, Desert AIDS Project is coming two times a month, once in, or two, four times, two times a month, once in the afternoon and once in, on an evening, and we have a schedule, and, so that's a really great partnership that we're, we're working on with them, and we're, we're doing some other things, I've got, we've got a grant application with them to do some other opportunities for, but we'll see if we get that one, and I'll tell you more later, and I, that's all I have, we, I don't wanna take up too much time, but I'm happy to answer any questions, working on our fall schedule, lots of things coming down the, down the line.
I know I have a lot of questions.
And then we do need to work on the, the calendar, you were talking about the, the calendar, meeting dates, do you wanna do that now, or you wanna do...
I just, I had some questions, Jeanne, on the Anderson Foundation, did they show up on your last day?
Yes, thank you, yes, the Anderson Children's Foundation representatives came at our grand finale celebration and helped us draw some prizes too, and...
Great.
We were able to honor them and recognize them.
We wanna keep them happy, so they can keep...
Oh, yeah, that was really nice, it's, it's such a great partnership, and then also National Charity League came out and helped us with, with our celebration, and they are a service group of moms and daughters, and they volunteer, and then Sherman's Deli donated cookies for our celebration, so we had chocolate chip cookies, and they were delicious.
First of all, first of all, I wanted to say that, I don't know if anyone out there in TV land has noticed, but you did have an op-ed piece in the Desert Sun on Monday about the library, so that was great.
I did.
The question I had for you, though, was about whether or not the library's received any new donations this month.
Do you know something I...
No, I was just wondering.
I don't know.
No, I'm just here to ask.
I don't know.
Any checks in the mail?
Any checks in the mail? Anything that needs to be deposited?
We did, we did get our Dia de los Niños grant, the five hundred dollars, that was a couple months ago, we, we did, we did that, but...
Nothing, okay.
I don't know.
Just as a question.
Where are you with your, you're in the new year with your halftime person who's gonna be doing passports, was that one thing David pushed back to save the two hundred thousand, or he's...
No, it's still on the list, I was on vacation, but now I am working to, I have to do an application with the State Department to become a passport acceptance center, so we wanna do that first, and make sure that they are okay with us being a passport center before we hire the person, but HR, Human Resources is moving along on that position, so that's good, and then we have a page, it's a twelve-hour position, our page, one of our pages is retiring, and so we'll have a little twelve-hour position open, coming open soon for, that's a Thursday, Friday, Saturday, yes, Thursday, Friday, Saturday schedule.
See, you, question, so, I mean, God forbid they say, "No, I'm sorry, we don't need you for passport," that position that was approved doesn't go away, I mean, you still have that position, right?
Well, it's intended to help with the passports, so I wouldn't feel real comfortable taking it if we didn't do the passports.
But aren't there other programs on our list, things that you wanted to do?
Planning, sure.
I mean, should reallocate it?
So, that would be a discussion we could have with our, like, two people on council and library.
I'm optimistic that we're going to be accepted as a passport facility.
And the, the sort of promotional campaign you had, do you know when that's gonna start? That exciting campaign you had?
Yes, um, thank you, um, yeah, so I worked on it a little bit before, I left for vacation, I just got back on Tuesday, so I'm picking that back up again, what I'm trying to do now is, I was working with procurement to decide, get the guidelines from them about who I can approach for spending the money without having to do RFP, full, you know, and so I'm gonna work on that, and then we'll get that going too, and then Jeanne and I just today discussed a, a small mini campaign that we wanna do in September for Library Card Month with our community leaders, making sure, we did this about, I wanna say, eight years ago, so it's been quite a while, where we approached our community leaders to make sure they have a library card, so we have a new superintendent of Palm Springs Unified that has come on since we've done this, other community groups that haven't, so we wanna make sure all of those building committee members have a card and all other people, so we're gonna do a mini campaign within that time too, so I will be hopping on that very soon.
Yes, I want, I would love, I wanna make sure that everybody on our building committee has a library card, so if you're on the building committee...
See ya.
Come get a library card. I wanna make sure you know about all the services, we added the canopy and Acorn Streaming too, and so I'm very excited about that, a new opportunity for, for users to, to have value with their library card. And do you wanna do the schedule for the, the meetings? I know there's been a request, and I don't know how, I know that there was a request to, to transition commissions, commissioner meetings to the evenings, have you heard about this, or...
It came from me, so I think, it came from the Citizens Working Group to be able to be more inclusive, I don't know that we have anybody here who needs an evening meeting, but...
So, they, the, they're, the city is looking at that to try to figure out a schedule, or to try to figure out what, how this is going to work, because we, we all have to...
Why don't we just set the meetings for...
We'll just continue as, as is.
October, November, December, and see what the city says.
Yeah, we'll just set it at, you know, we'll just continue with our regularly scheduled meeting schedule, obviously we have to adjust November.
November, December.
Yes, but, once we, I just wanted to put that out there, that that may come down too, and we may have to switch to an evening meeting.
And if we do, it's fine.
I agree.
As we go through this building process, we may have to have some evening meetings, and people may wanna...
For the group, oh, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I think that's...
And I've heard of a lot of library commissioners that meet in the evening.
Some of, several of the people are young and have jobs.
I appreciate that.
Okay, so, all right.
So, what about November?
So, based on history, what we did before, so we were always, we'd meet the fourth Thursday, so historically, we moved it up to the third Thursday, which would be Thursday the twenty-first of November, and we moved it to the Learning Center because we wouldn't have access to this room, and then December, it's the same thing, historically, because it's the fourth, we moved it up to the third, which would be December nineteenth, again, moving it into the Learning Center at the library, keeping it at the same time of three o'clock, so that's initially what is tentative, based on what your decision is.
Do you have, have discussion or conflicts or...
It's fine.
Does anybody have a conflict, that's more...
Craig is checking.
November's the twenty-first, December's the nineteenth.
Thank you.
And then the city clerk has a recording device that we can borrow to audio-record the meeting, so that it's still available for, for people to...
And so those are gonna be at the Learning Center, or...
Yes, at the library.
Okay.
Yeah, unless you wanna have it somewhere else.
I don't know, I think we'll just have it there for now.
Craig, you're good?
I'm good, I'm just thinking about the foundation, do you have any...
Yeah, we're gonna, I think, discuss that on Monday, because it's always conflicting, and we have to discuss changing that.
Okay, so we're gonna put those on the schedule for November twenty-first and December nineteenth, and we'll update our website and the calendar.
Okay, thank you. Any trustee comments or...
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Craig, Craig, I apologize, we didn't get a, a chance for you to, to tell us a little bit about yourself, would, would that be something you'd be comfortable doing?
We have that much time.
Turn on your mic.
Well, real quick, I moved here in eighty-six with my family, I came to work for Palm Springs Unified School District, and I stayed there until two thousand and ten, when I retired as Assistant Superintendent of Schools there, so I watched Palm Springs Unified grow from ten thousand to twenty-four thousand students while I was here, so it was exciting, we built schools, hired a lot of teachers, educated a lot of kids, so it was, it was great. I'm involved with the RAP Board, I'm on their executive board, it's a program that's unique to the Coachella Valley and to the state of California, we receive funds from Costco Shopping Center in Palm Desert, and we distribute that money to nonprofits in the area of health, mental health, and juvenile delinquency, so, I'm also on the executive board for the Mizell Senior Center, my wife is an author and international speaker, and so sometimes our life's a little bit hectic, but it's great, Palm Springs is a better home, we love it here, so...
Do you still have ties to the schools?
Periodically, I'm an educational consultant now, so, right now I'm working in Redlands Unified School District, and I fill in sometimes in Palm Springs, so, and what I had in my board comments is thank, oh, somebody needs to stand up and move.
There we go.
I wanna thank Jeanne for the quality orientation you gave me this week, and thank you so much for your time, 'cause I know you're busy.
Oh, thanks.
I wanted to thank you for the presentation today, it was wonderful.
Thank you, and I'm happy, I'm sure I'll do it again, I'm happy to, to do it, I'll take it on the road, I'll take it on the road.
You know, what I appreciate was the interiors they designed, I thought that that was fabulous, and might, some of it carry over to whatever we do in the future, but the interior design was great.
Feel free to take a look at these, these boards, it's fascinating up close.
And I just wanna say thank you to Ed and Kathy for taking on the responsibility of being, doing all of this here, and then working on the building committee, that is, when I, when Councilmember Middleton said that she wants to get this on the October calendar...
That scares me.
I, my heart skipped a beat, so I'm with you on that one, so, but I, I can't think of better people to do this work, so thank you.
Well, the current council wants to make the decision, so, and their last meeting, I think, is December...
It's the first week in December.
I think it's the seventh.
Yeah.
So, it's all gotta be wrapped up by then.
And they have to get it on, they have to get it on the agenda.
Yep.
And we certainly want them to hold the parcel downtown, and hold that option and not decide to sell it, which could happen if we don't move quickly.
Yeah, I definitely can't persuade them to put it in, so I don't know if you have...
Yep.
Hold on to it, till the decision's made.
And that goes for all of you, if you're speaking to anyone on council, you know, please ask them to...
Thank them.
They've all been so supportive.
The, the, can I just say something that isn't as little out of place, the five-point-one million dollars that Grit was talking about wasn't really lost, they never had cash, and that's what I, 'cause I went and talked to council members who were negotiating on it, and it wasn't, it really wasn't...
It wasn't real money.
It wasn't real money, the only thing they were ever gonna give the city was property.
Yeah.
So, we didn't, I, you know, I was afraid we had lost something that would be very valuable, and, and what, we didn't.
I, I will also say that in, in, out, and about, and going to all of the, the announcements for city council, I've, I volunteered, and hope you guys would too, to anybody who's running for council, if they wanna know information about the library, or they would like to meet with any of us, or, I know staff is also up into that.
Have any of them, have any of them taken you up on that?
No, no, not yet.
I've had one, one candidate visit.
I have a feeling, once this gets out, that the building committee is starting to look at all of this very seriously, we might all of us start to get this.
We may have them come sit in our meetings, if they're free, I've seen, I was at several meetings yesterday where people from different districts came to see what was going on.
Yeah, yeah, I have a feeling we'll start getting some attention pretty soon, when word is out that where the building committee is in action.
They're busy right now, they have to get a hundred and twenty signatures, and that's hard in little districts.
I've give my commercial, I know you guys are too, every time I meet one of them, happy to talk to them about the library, so...
Here we go.
I think this meeting is adjourned at four fifty-six, and have a nice August, everyone, we'll see you back here in September.
I may see some of you before.
I think we'll see some of you before.